You're not, I, I am down south.
Yeah.
Me too. Somebody did work.
Now we do.
Looks like it's seven o'clock, so meeting's over, Maurice, can you open a meeting?
Can I probably come in now for a lot of this kind of another one? The one touches that we do the business of the city and be strong in unity, Jesus, and we pray, amen.
Amen. Okay, uh, first thing I want to know, there's something said last week that led me to believe that some may not understand selection of engineers or things like that, but just in case you don't know, back many years ago, uh, John Hawkins was our city's engineer and he was stayed there for many, many years. Uh, until he died, really, then his son took it over. Then when he ventured out, when a couple of the employees there took that company over, and then, uh, during that time, they hired another man, and that was the man, he's our engineer now, Lynn Spears. Now, for a long time, we didn't need an engineer. We didn't have any project that needed an engineer's input on. So, but anyway, though, then comes a time that we did need an engineer. So, I looked around, uh, to see who was best, would produce what I thought would produce the best job, and I called other, like Southwest Planning, and asked them, and they all recommended Lynn Spears. Now, employing an engineer, you don't hire him by the month, by the year, by whatever. You hire him and you say that, "I'd like to paint his water tank." "Okay, I'll get to work and put spec plan and specs together, and then advertise for bid, and then, uh, if you get a little bidder, and you get the money appropriated to do that, well, I'd say we'll come out of there." But if you don't get the money to do the project, then you don't owe me anything. So, that's how our engineer status is. Lynn Spears works on a completed project basis, and they has percentages stated in contracts about the engineer gets this most support. So, anyway, though, that's, that's how the engineer is employed by the city. They don't, we don't owe them anything until, um, the job is, or gets, get the money and start on the job, so. Does anybody understand that? That makes clear enough, it's unreadable. Okay, I have no question about that, uh, most approve the agenda?
I will have your agenda.
Second?
I'll say.
All four? Okay. Okay, next thing, the minutes. Everybody had a chance to look over the minutes?
I know they're good, make motion to approve.
Grant? Second? Maurice? All four? Okay. Uh, budget report?
I did have a question about that, because we voted a couple of months ago to rent the Jew out for a hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
It's not listed here separately, did you add it to the same person renting it?
Uh, it'd be the same person renting.
Right, did you, but it, on here, it says rental property, it only lists the truck wagon and the bowling alley, did you add it with the bowling alley?
No, he had not yet taken possession yet.
Oh, okay.
He's waiting till we get like Christie Hooked up up there, and then it'll be two different levels.
Okay.
Hard on two levels.
I thought he was gonna put it in the interest of you up there.
Well, he's waiting on the interest of the deal.
Okay.
Yeah. Any more questions? If not, do they hear a motion to approve?
I'm gonna let you get approved.
Second?
Oh.
Second, Grant? All four? Alright. Okay, now then, we've named another pump on Hickory Lane, and, uh, it's gonna cost approximately just a hundred ten thousand dollars. And that's another thing that I want to say is, uh, always in the past, we have got a general figure about what a pump would cost. And then I would ask for a few dollars more than that, just to make sure that we had enough to cover it. The council would approve it, so forth and so on. And then, when it comes to paying part, then we pay what it costs for the pump block, we didn't, we didn't spend the ten thousand dollars no worse. So, anyway, though, any question about the pump? What's on with the pump, is there? Mileage, age, how old is it, what, six, seven years old one? How many hours we have on it? You haven't got any tires on it? I don't want problems.
We'll buy the same type pump to put back in?
Might have to, because it won't, it doesn't have a fit up to us. So, we're gonna do again in six years? Do it possibly.
That's, that's one of the main pumps, it pumps for what you ever play out of the city.
Everything, no, yeah, that, everything in town goes through those other pump stations, winds up down there, and then that one sends it on to the, to the pump.
I was thinking that was the final leg on.
That pumps everything that, that go through, where are we gonna get this money from? At our family. We not have it in the, in the waterworks pump? Well, we do, but, I mean, don't cut it further, further than.
I mean, well, everything you've already said, we might have asked them more money for the end year, well, do it possibly. So, I mean, we need to come back to just the necessities, of what we got to have. I'm not saying that it's not a necessity, I just, if I know I'm running out of money, then it's time to get tight, you know what I mean?
I know, that's what you're talking about. So.
You have possibly ten thousand.
Last one was ninety, oh, ninety-two, one, ninety-eight, ninety-two, ninety-four.
Didn't we just replace one? I, I don't, I didn't read about the paper.
Yeah, what one did we get replaced? Where we had welder come in and weld and everything, you replaced?
The other one down there. Huh? We replaced the other one down there, yeah.
What is the other one down there? I have no idea what you mean, you say the other one down there?
It's true, and it's well.
Okay, well, we replaced that one, why didn't we get both of them done then?
Well, that other one was still chugging along. Get every bit out of where you get. I mean, you don't ever know where it's gonna run thirty days, or six months, or six years.
So, are we replacing a spare pump that's sitting there, does it take both pumps?
Takes both pumps and all of them, they.
But it will run on one pump?
Yeah, but.
I understand you don't wanna run on one pump, because you don't wanna fix it in that kind of position.
One pump goes around, you gotta worry about her. I mean, you got sewage running out on top of the ground, and then you got EPA on your back. So, any more question about that?
That would be authorized up to ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
What happens if the pump is ten thousand five hundred?
Oh, it ain't gonna be more than that.
And regardless where the money comes from, I mean, if it's something that we need, we're just gonna have to extend it regardless.
There's gonna be virtually plenty of money here.
Whether it comes out of this pump or that pump. And we're already running slim in that pump.
Yeah.
Make a motion if we move forward with it, lock that money and purchase it.
I'm willing.
It's something we got to have.
Can you say it again?
Yes.
I didn't mean to cut you off, Grant.
No, if it is, I mean, if it's something we got to have, the money's got to come out somewhere, regardless, and we're gonna have to look at the budget on one of the other plans anyway.
All four? Okay, update on water tank project. We, as you know, we had the lid, had the paint tested, and it turned out to have lead in it, and the bonus amount, and, uh, so therefore, we had to go back and rebid because it changed the requirements or, or segments of, of, of the original bid. So, anyway, though, it, uh, bids on that was opened this past Tuesday, and, uh, they came in in two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, which is about sixty-one thousand dollar more money than what we got. Now, we don't know what, uh, the funding agency, we don't know what they're gonna say. There's a possibility that we might can get the extra funds from the funding agency. And, uh, so that's what we have been doing, is trying to talk to them and secure that extra money. So, we feel good about it, but you know, until you get it in your pocket, uh, you don't have it, so, uh, anyway, though, we're just kinda running on, uh, wait right now. So, that's what I know about the, uh, water tank. Uh, next?
I don't see. I got, I got a question there.
Alright.
I thought originally we had three hundred thousand dollars for the water tank. Uh, that's what we told in all the media, I may be mistaken, but I was gonna be appreciating we had three hundred thousand dollars for the water tank, a year ago.
If we did, it, it would have missed quote, because we didn't.
Okay. Now, maybe I missed something.
Don't have a question, you, you anticipate them getting the money, but what happens if they don't, and you've awarded this bid to this company for this?
We can't award it.
I thought it said at the back, you needed to do it in ten days.
Right, we won't sign it until we get the money in place.
Okay.
Uh, but anyway, though, that's,
Fifty one, fifty one?
That's the last page, I think, I grabbed it, that's, I don't know.
Are there other avenues that this does not pan out, or are there other options?
They're asking, how much money can the city put in? So, we, I don't really wanna talk really loud about that, because I don't wanna interrupt them to come try to get it on our part.
How, go ahead, sorry.
What?
How long before, if something goes wrong with that, how long before we lose the money that they granted us?
That's a question I can't answer, Rob.
I mean, I'm saying, if we drop some couple of years, we can't put everything going higher and higher.
I know, I know.
This bid in a year from now would be another twenty thousand dollars.
It's already higher than it was when we, than it was when we got the, a bid award, so, uh, uh, but anyhow, though, that's, that's where we are on that, but we feel good about getting extra money, but if we don't, well, then we'll have to gather around a round table again and talk about what we did. So, anyway, any other question about that?
So, we're leaving it, it's just wait to see if the other money becomes available?
Well, when we get over here to the back, to that package that I sent you out yesterday, then I'm gonna ask you to authorize me to sign this, uh, notice of award when we get the money. Now, the reason I wanna do it that way is, I don't want to do tomorrow, next week, get a call, say, "Okay, you got the money," then, I don't wanna waste time having a call, council back there, no, to a session again, to get this approved. Understand?
Just to give you a text, when that money comes available, uh, go ahead and make the agreement on it.
To pursue, that's right, right, so, uh.
I mean, that's the proof that's what we're working for anyway, isn't it?
That's right.
If the money comes available to award it.
If we don't get the money, we'll, hey, not even award it, so, it's just, it's a nutshell. So, wh- why are we talking about that? Is there any other question about signing this? Like, if you got yesterday, this last pay notice of award?
So, do we sign this, and you can give it back to you?
Uh, no, no, I, I'll sign the original. Y'all just make a motion to authorize me to sign it.
Do the, if it runs past the ten days, are these people gonna be okay, telling him, saying about it?
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna be, no, no.
Well, I'm over the weekend, I'm about to get forwarded to sign the notice of award, during a period between council meeting.
If the money becomes available.
If the money becomes available.
Okay, now then, we got a second.
Without using the city money?
Yeah, yeah, most valuable. I mean, perhaps use something else, well, then we'll have to talk back to town.
Alright, well, I'll second it. No, we don't use city money.
All four? Okay, Pavilion. Uh, bids on the, rebids on the Pavilion was open again today, and, uh, we got two bids. Uh, one bid was from Barton Roofing Construction out of Hope, for eighty-five thousand, three hundred. Second and last bid was Bogo and Baines out of Hope, for a hundred and six thousand, five hundred and eighty-six, which is exactly the same thing that they bid before. Uh, so that's the only two bids we got. Now then, this bid from Barton Roofing had all kinds of flaws to it. Uh, a bid bond is required, there wasn't a bid bond. Uh, line items, uh, like, the Pavilion, build the Pavilion, and they rolled in their excluding electrical. So, they revised the.
So, it's really gonna be more than that?
Huh?
So, it's gonna be more than that?
Well, with them, did the, the bid request, would, would be blocking electrical, this, yeah, so.
This is not even gonna bid on it then, if you're not gonna put it out there.
This bid ain't no good. So, we're in the process of drafting a letter to send to this company, telling them their bid.
He can do the full job one hundred percent?
Or not at all.
Or not at all?
Not at all, that's right, so.
If he can't.
Anyway, though, that's, that's where we stand on that bid. Now, Bogo and Baines, uh, when they bid before, uh, they here talked to them about modifying it, what you can do to the low bidder. And, if we didn't put a ceiling in it, we didn't put the electrical in it, we didn't put the lights and the fan, we didn't put the sink, uh.
Till we make a shell, with nothing else?
Yeah, basically. They, it would cut down, their price would cut down eighty-five thousand. Now, were they all still on to that or not? Wait and see. But I don't wanna start talking to them until we get this other one.
How deep can the modification go?
That's basically what I was telling you, they, this, we didn't put a ceiling in it.
Well, I was saying, how deep can they go, though? Is that as deep as they can go? Can we change the whole out scope of it?
No.
Because if you're making a metal building, you can build it for fifty thousand dollars, if you get plenty of money to live.
Well, I think the lady just put this, the editor was booked up on that.
That hopes you got a metal building, fresh, I mean, it's a metal building, it'll work.
You're talking about a hub?
Yeah.
Bit like that?
It's something like that, you can do it for fifty thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars.
Now, our last meeting, Jackie was gonna visit with their engineers out at the steel mill, and get a couple bids there, get a bid there.
So, so it is cheaper, a little bit cheaper, the guy that we talked to, when we provided him with the bid requisition, he doesn't have, like, he doesn't have the bid for the bond and all that kind of, that stuff. Um, from what I, we discovered, yes, it should be cheaper going metal or steel rather than going to wood. Uh, and I believe that's what Barton did, theirs is a, theirs is a metal building rather than the wood. Um, and, and my understanding, Barton was gonna partner with an electrician and a plumber, so, I mean, did you look further down in his bid, there should have been, because that was his?
Didn't say anything about anyone else doing that, it just excluded him.
Gotcha, because that, my understanding is they were going, because they were talking with Jay Allen's boy to come in and do the electrical, because he were, he's currently right now working under a licensed electrician as a apprentice, I guess is the right word, so they were trying to do that. Uh, but yes, um, I, I'm like him, I think a metal building, and I believe, you know, of course, I can only speak for myself on the committee, but I believe once you present that to the committee, that it will be low maintenance, that other people have it, that it can be built. Ms. Joanne's fear was that it would look like a barn, she didn't realize that we could pick a couple of ten.
If you build it out of cypress, it would just come up like a barn.
Sorry.
If you build it out of cypress, it would just come up like a barn.
Right, so, I, at this point, um, I, I think that the committee is in agreeance to changing some of the things that we were originally set.
There's the next one.
We're supposed to update me next week.
If we stop right in the middle of this project and just change the whole scope, how much time do we have before this money's gone?
December thirty-first, you have to use it on December thirty-first.
November the thirtieth?
So. December.
December thirtieth?
Yeah.
The committee decides to change and go with that, then we gotta go back to Spears and go through all the hits, getting somebody to engineer it, and now we're out twice the money, because we don't have it engineered once.
You shouldn't have to, a, a metal building person should be able to take the engineering plans that you have and convert those over into.
So, we pay Spears for the engineering plans that he has? No, because they're not gonna work.
He's already.
We have to pay him for what he's done, though.
Yeah, he's already part of that, but I'm just saying, it, it should, again, I, I don't know, I haven't checked into that, but it should, they should be able to draw you a, a steel blueprint that would be just like the wooden blueprint. It should, should relay over, and these men that do these buildings.
Yeah, what, what's the timeline on it, though?
That I don't know, I would have to check.
That's the big key right now, you've got two, three months, this money's gotta be spent.
Clogs, chicken.
How long were these bids open for?
It was.
It's open for two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
And having someone come in and say, "Can you bid this at the steel building?" It's not gonna even work at all, it's like having Barton, I mean, I like Tyler.
Yeah.
He's done good work for me, I like him, good guy, good contractor. But he's gotta bid what, what the sheet says exactly, or his bid is no good. That's, that's for anybody. So, we gotta get, if that's what, if that's what the committee wants to do, then they've gotta change everything. Get back with Mr. Booker and go back through Spears and get him to change it all, the metal building. It costs another, I mean, because, and maybe you don't have to go through Spears again, but you, you gotta pay him for what he's done, which is, so if you're out twelve thousand dollars for nothing, it'd probably be cheaper to pay him to change it to a metal building and be out fourteen thousand dollars and have everything. I don't know. Or you stay with what you got and try to come up with the rest of the money. Or we didn't add it around till after the thirty-first, and we lose it all?
Wrong, yes, the items that, that they have recommended, that we all, we can do them ourselves, as that we have time. The, the ceiling is wood, and I feel like Philip will probably know the name of the wood, so we just got labor involved, and we're gonna be, we're gonna be paying it to men, we're not. So, anyway, though, we could do that, the plumbing and electrical, we could do that. I mean, the parts that they leave and all, and now, they've got the original contract bid was for handicap marketplaces. Well, funding agencies only asked them for one, so we cut off three of the investment money that we had cut off. And changing the asphalt to concrete, would cost a little bit more for concrete, but, the, when they was, these bidders was looking for someone to do asphalt before, they couldn't get him one to come for such a little amount.
Right.
So, they'd rather go ahead and, before concrete, for concrete bid. So, uh, the, the deletions that they were talking about, and I think I was, hanging both of them, uh, that can be done in time, and we'll still have a really nice building.
So, it's just a matter of, of, I guess, the committee, you need to get with the committee and tell them about the deletion, and let them make a decision on what they wanna do.
Well.
I mean, we can get the building, and like you say, one, we can do, I mean, we can do plumbing and electrical later. I understand that, but that's not my decision, it's gonna be the committee's decision over that project.
Well, I think it's done, gone past the city, because it's done in that type of bids, and if we accept this Bogo and Baines bid, then there's no real consideration for anything else. If they will go with a price, we don't know whether we will or not.
Right, they did the first time, but this is the second time.
Well, that's right, and we hope in the middle of this time, but we don't know that. So, I'm suggesting if we go ahead with, with wood building as designed, and, uh, then whatever's gotta be left off, well, then we'll do it as time permits, time and money permits. That's twenty-one thousand dollars, that's, that's, that's material, labor, profit, the whole nine yards, so we can do it for a heck of a worth of that.
We can't do anything until all the bids come in, you said it was two weeks and went out today?
No, no, they all ended.
Is that still two weeks?
They were open today.
They're too close to today.
Oh.
They're two o'clock today, after that, they want, can't accept no more bids.
So, who's on this committee?
Uh?
The, the, is that, the committee for the Pavilion?
Well, far, I know Joanne, she's the whole committee, I don't wanna just talk to me.
Who's on the committee?
Mr. Maurice Grant, he is, Shannon Peck, he is, I am, Linda Allen, Jessica Allen, um, Ms. Joanne is our chairperson, Randy Peck. Sorry, I'm gonna run through, I get everybody.
I just.
Joanne was here at the bid opening, it's afternoon, and we discussed this with the engineer here for quite a bit, and she said we were condemned to go ahead with what we got, what we reduced.
That's, well, I can't make a call on that, I'm not gonna make a call on that. I think you go to the committee, they need to sit down with you and say, "Yeah, this is what we wanna do," or, "No, we, we don't wanna do that, we'd rather lose all the money to do it that way," that's up to them. I've not been involved in it, so I can't make that call.
Now, we've done spent about seven thousand dollars off that money.
We, we could call a special meeting with the, uh, committee, call that special meeting, and to be able to give you guys another answer, you guys would then possibly be willing to call a special meeting just to discuss this one point? That could be a solution if you chose to do that.
I have no problem with that, if that's what people wanna do. I just can't make a call on something that I've had nothing to do with, and, and jump out there and make a decision for them. That's not my decision to make. That's how I feel.
Can we get an answer, by mind, just?
Yes, I should, we should be able to get you an answer on that, Nick.
Alright.
So, Dave, I got a question on that.
Alright.
When are you gonna know if they'll, if people do the cut like you did the first time, to get it down to the eighth?
We got, we got to do away with this first bid, first round, before we could even start trying to go negotiate.
So, what do we, what, what do you need to do away with the first bid?
We, we just made the draft, letter, documented all the flaws that we found in their bid, and get it to them.
You mean, uh, Barton's?
So, so, so I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding, we don't want that bid anyway, but there is no good. So, so, so I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding, we don't want that bid anyway, but if there is no good, so what does the committee need any of it?
To say we want to reduce them, take Bogor mains and be willing to reduce the outsourced.
I understand that, but for him to get going, what do you, what do you need?
I need authorization to, uh, tell the engineer that, to, uh, draft me a letter and get it to Barton.
So, does that need, need to come from the council?
No. Then, after that, after we get that letter drafted and get it to them, then we can start negotiating with Bogor mains.
So, they, you don't decide you don't want-
No, he said he could draft the letter, then that'll be less time.
So, you're gonna go ahead and draft the letter now?
And then take care of, get rid of Barton. Then by Monday, I'll send out a thing tonight, ask him to get ready to meet Friday or over the weekend with the committee, and we'll be able to get him an answer by Monday, then he can call a special meeting with the, um, to give the final approval or rejection.
I know that's the hard way around, but it's not my place to make a decision on something they fought so hard for, and I bet nothing to do with it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, Rob, they fought for that type of-
And I'm gonna let them fight for whichever way they wanna go, if they wanna go cheaper, or if they wanna try to come up with some money somewhere.
We, we burn in daylight, so that's what you wanna do, that's what we do. You make a motion to table it?
I'll make a motion to table that too, we'll get further information.
Okay, the next item, uh, for the project four to seven hundred, uh, that's cleaning up the ice storm damage. And, uh, it, uh, put the comma in the wrong place, didn't I? It, present time, it looks like we're gonna get somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-five thousand dollars. I would, now, they'll come in two parts, one part will be about eighteen thousand, and then a state part will be the rest of it. So, I would ask the council, uh, we're paying double insurance on the Kubota tractor. Uh, Kubota required their mentioning, which our insurance is high. And then we're paying interest, so that's, that's adding up. So, we're paying about what it rolled, nearly a hundred dollars a month.
Seven ninety-five, some change.
Seven ninety-five, a lot of payments on it before.
I think our payment is actually like six hundred and nineteen, I think, is where our actual payment is, and the rest, it brings it up to seven ninety-five is, is their interest.
Is their tax on it. So, anyway though, I'd like to take, uh, and we owe just under ten thousand, what, what was it rolling exactly?
I can't remember, nine something.
It's under, it's just a full ten thousand. I would like to take that money, which we haven't got yet, but I'd like to take ten thousand dollars of it and pay off that strike.
I agree with that one hundred percent.
We'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion if we receive the money.
Yeah.
Take ten thousand of it.
Rob, second with Grant, all four. Alright, thank y'all.
So, isn't it the same?
Huh?
Isn't nine the same as eight, or did I miss something?
Kinda connected.
Out of nine, but we're coming to nine.
When, so, just one question on that, when will we know that we are gonna get the money?
Uh-
Just out of curiosity, I mean, don't hire-
This, this new thing, portal, is taking over the world, I reckon. So, FEMA, they do paperwork and they put it in a portal. They sent me an email, they needed to get it at the board and sign it. So, last week, I signed off on everything that we were supposed to have to do for FEMA's concern. Now then, it's been turned over to the state, and we just now start on getting the state to part it. So, within a few days, and I won't say how many days, we should be getting the first eighty-five thousand dollars. But, I mean, it's all gonna prove, there's no other hurdle to jump through, no.
I mean, it don't have any-
By then, we have another meeting for it, and most of the time, we have to try to pay off.
Good deal.
So, but anyway though, so out of mine, they're taking care of it. Now, what did you find out, Rob, on the scale?
Uh, our scales, oh, I mean, it's a cylinder bottle scale, single cylinder, digital display, for a thousand forty-nine dollars.
Are they installed and calibrated?
No, we, you want me to come, I'll come install them and calibrate them, it's a matter of setting them in place, popping them up, or you wanna do-
You're certified scale man?
I do it every day at work.
For how much money?
A thousand forty-nine dollars.
Four thousand forty-nine dollars?
I said, a piece.
Okay.
So, that's two thousand, twenty-one hundred dollars for the sale.
Okay.
I don't know about shipping or handling. I'm just saying fifty-two hundred dollars, well, I think it was fifty-two hundred you was at your home, that's a lot of money for two forty bills. Now, let me ask you this, what's wrong with the bottle scales we got right now?
When was that thing bought, one, or before you come here, wasn't it?
Maybe it was in the eighties.
Okay, so what's wrong with them?
Well, the state is changing the law, they want you to have a scale and numbers and stuff, so, before and now it is.
So, they're requiring us to get a digital scale, is that what you're telling me?
What?
They're requiring us to have a digital scale?
As long as you got the numbers to register according to how many pounds you pump.
So, uh, the scale we have now, is it digital or analog?
I think that's it.
It is digital?
Yeah, but it was work.
What can I read out they got on them, Ron? It's not digital.
It's not like they're clocked in, they, it's, it's number, but it, that never worked.
Like I said, when I took it over, it was getting work, and when the state coming down the inspection, the health department, they was asking, hey, you had to.
They was asking us to change them, or they told us we had to?
We had to.
So, they have a letter saying we have to change those?
They, they don't, they don't ask, most of them.
I understand, they have a letter saying we have to change those, do we have to act for it?
We had to make them work.
So, we had to try to make them work?
Yeah, that's a lot of stuff that we have to be complacent with.
Well, if it's eighty model, it's all obsolete anyway, you're not gonna do any parts for it.
Well, it's passed, way beyond that.
The state was super old and we need to do and be complacent, what they want, to skip whatever scale we're-
Are we gonna be okay with like any compliance if we get these scales he's talking about, and he comes and calibrates them?
I really don't know, but he's a certified scale man, yeah, he-
No, I'm not certified, I do it every day though. My, my question is this, why do we have to have Jack Tyler do this? At all the scale companies?
We don't.
Okay.
That's just the only one that I could get to give us the, the best quote.
The best, where's the quote, do you got three quotes on it?
There's only-
I, 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 I haven't seen, no quotes, all I've seen is the numbers that you put in here.
Well, that's, that's from a quote, I mean, golly, I hope my words acted, so, but, uh,
Did you get three quotes on him?
No.
Okay. I thought that was what you just said.
No, no, it's, uh, the quote from, that's like Jack Tyler. It, they'll send you a letter, which they've already sent me a letter, saying that they was the only dealer that supplied this item in Arkansas. So, so, and it, with that, we don't have to have three bids, we can just file one bid.
So, we would buy the highest we could find just because we didn't wanna get three bids? I'm not understanding why we don't try to get cheaper, we're running out of money, that's what I hear. Well, let's try to get cheaper.
Well, you got cheaper.
Hmm?
I mean, that's what you wanna do, well, then, good. Just as long as when the health department comes down here, they, they accept it. What scales are you talking about?
This is the information on them, I'd like for you to, to get, to go look at the website, maybe you could call them and talk to them and see.
Yeah, I wanna see those.
Are you doing the work, or are they all doing the work?
He's doing-
I'm in charge of-
So, he's doing his quotes and stuff, I'm talking to the wrong person?
Rob, he does a lot of background groundwork for me, but I'm the one that's handling the course.
Okay.
I think Juan wanted to look at the scales.
Yeah, he's not looking at scales anyways. Handle with Mr. Booker when you know.
I believe you understand what's my profession.
No, I don't, it sounds like I'm a veteran.
Yeah, no.
You do all the voting?
I'm in charge of the water, this water, I got lots of for those things, and I'm the one, the answer to the health department. I'm the one that come, the health department come and deal with it, I'm, I'm saying, yeah. So, I had to see if when the health department sent me some paper, I had to show the mayor, this is what you need to do, tell the council that we need this scale, that we need this pump, that we-
That it's in company, this company.
If that's the owner-
I didn't ask, I didn't ask.
Thing is, I have never seen three bids on these scales. I know the scales are cheaper. We've, we've been asking for fifty-two hundred dollars for four months now.
Well, Rob.
Ma'am.
If you have found cheaper scales, but if somebody has to be certified to calibrate them, that might make a difference.
So, there's-
Does somebody who's certified, can you come do it?
There's other people, those people will probably come do it, I don't know. There's people we can contact. We don't have to do everything through Jack Tyler.
I'm not saying we do.
Jack Tyler will come and change a tire at my house if I call him and pay him enough, I promise you.
But anybody would, but do you have somebody that you can call?
Memphis scales, I'm not, I'm not supposed to do all the homework and do the work?
But you're, but if that's the only one that's-
You are, yeah, I can, uh, this thing, we can look at it, we can check it out, yeah. We can check it out and find the right price to be able to see and make sure that the health department will take, hey, this is bad, yeah. But you come in here and try to see, it's the only place, not a word like that, like I say, uh, we can look at it.
Memphis scales out of Memphis?
We'll come do it, there's scale, scale products out of Little Rock, they will come do it. We can do this thing our own to save the city money, and that's why I do a lot of stuff, a lot of plumbing, a lot of electric, a lot of-
Are you certified to calibrate?
Well, I can get done, as long, as long as I give complaints for what the health department want.
But will it be?
Yeah, I'll see what I-
So, you can certify them?
I can get a good, certify, yeah, because I'm the one that is in charge of the water.
Can't certify the scale?
Well, that's what he's telling me.
He said he could get someone.
He can get someone to certify?
We can work if we get it like the-
You're talking about like you wouldn't-
If we went with this, you could call somebody in to come certify them?
That's what I'm saying.
Well, we gotta make sure that somebody's not gonna charge us four thousand dollars to come certify them, that's where-
That's why you're looking into that, to see who is the cheaper and make sure it work for what we need and what, what, what the health department be able to approve it.
How often do they have to be certified?
Uh, the, the health department come just by, depends according to how my records and how my water report, they come every three, four years. If my, if all my paperwork is, is good, all my chemical stuff, all my size, everything is good, they give me five years. And like I say, while I go out and I say nothing about water tower, we really need to step up because here, when I did all my inspection, they asked me to have a paperwork, get the water tower inspected, I don't know if the mayor told you about it, to get somebody to come and give us inspection report, but when we called us, somebody was asking two thousand dollars to come and climb the tower. Why we go spend two thousand, like you say, we got same money, why we go spend two thousand dollars, just somebody to climb when we go paint the water tower? So, I told the, the engineer, and I talked to the health department, said, we got to paint the water tower this year.
No, they can get inspected.
So, he say you got it to the end of December to complete it, then you bring me the order report?
To start-
Be able to complete it by December?
Yeah, to start with, Rob, backing up on some things that, uh, roll of water used to come around and inspect these things for us, we quit it. Now then, we got to hire someone to do it, and I want that two thousand or so dollars to have it done. The health department is actively wanting us to do it now, knowing that we're gonna be repainting it in a few weeks. I mean, but that's what we have got them to agree to, postponing the inspection until after December.
Yeah.
So, anyway though, there's a whole lot of work going on behind-
But then, are we gonna have to pay somebody to come inspect it after we get it painted?
No, then we get it done till December.
If we get it done, then the engineer will write up a certification on it. So, uh, but, but if he wouldn't, well then, yes, we'd have to have somebody inspect it right after a brandy thing job. I mean, they get a whole lot of things that goes on that- that don't come to this table. So, y'all tell me what to do. Only thing I want is scales that will satisfy the health department's requirements. I don't care where they come from.
One, can you give me three bids on that?
You already done the investigation on buying your scales, so you say you like those.
So, you want me to do everybody's job for them? I'm the city council, I'm not the mayor or the, uh, city manager. Would you like to?
You, you the one that used to those things?
I'm the one that says, wait a minute, we're spending too much money. We need three bids instead of fifty-two hundred, when I can look online, that quick you find it for a thousand forty-nine dollars? That, yeah, I kinda get suspicious about it.
Then you call those people, then you call those people, yeah, they do, then you got this installed, the scale?
No, I showed them on their site, they have them installed, ready to shoot.
Site, they show you all the stuff, when are you looking at it?
Juan, do you know somebody who is certified to calibrate the scale that we bought through there?
Yeah.
You do? Can you ask them how much they charge to come do that? And see if, because if they charge three thousand-
No, I'm talking about this, like, they work for the, uh, chlorine insertion.
I mean, I don't know how much.
Is that all?
I don't care what you do, I'm just know that we keep spending, just, what, just blowing money left and right, left and right? We're gonna ask them more money toward the end of the year, we ain't gonna have none to give.
But only, only two more years, you, you have to do another study rate on your water, and I go give more money on, to be raised.
Well, I mean, I don't understand why we use Jack Tyler, when Jack Tyler's, I mean, you can call him for anything. I understand the business and company, I've looked him up, I've talked to him, but I call him and ask him to come change a tire for me, and I pay him enough, they'll come change the tire for me. I under, I understand, sometimes we get complacent with companies, it's just so easy to call that company and say, hey, can you buy me this? And they find it, and they say, yeah, here's your price on it, and you go with that, before you do any research anywhere else. If we're tight for money, we need to be doing all the research we can and getting tickets we can.
And that's what I do, I try to say, every page that we can say, I do a lot of stuff that they order. But, but yeah, I was a water operator, west water operator, and, and plumbing inspector, I'm not supposed to go and poly pump or a major, cleaners major. I sure don't like the other guys saying, tell your mayor, you gotta get a contractor to come and work on those things. I'm over there and then-
Okay, I'm not concerned with what you do on a safety basis with what you're complaining about, having to do.
Yeah, that's-
What I'm concerned with is saving the city's money, instead of blowing it on everything, just because it's real easy to call a company and say, get me a price on this.
That's what I'm saying.
I want three quotes on these, on these scales, installed. I wanna make a motion that we get three quotes on the two-cylinder scales, installed, ready to go, state certified.
Rob, you don't have any idea how much online telephone work that I do on this sort of stuff. And when I run up to one that I think's the best, well, then that's what I bring to you. But now, whatever you wanna do, you made a motion to do what?
I wanna make a motion that we get three quotes from three different companies on these scales to be completed, state certified. If we have the ability to order the scales and have someone come and do it, that's fine too.
Motion made to get three quotes for two sets of scales. Go ahead, a second. All four.
How long do we have to get this work, get new scales in place?
About the end of the year.
End of the year.
Alright. Next item on the list is, last meeting, we approved the per- Next item on the list is, last meeting, we approved a purchase of eight folding tables, but we didn't approve the manner of buying them. Do we hear a motion for up to a thousand dollars for tables?
I make a motion we spend up to a thousand dollars for eight folding tables.
A second.
All for it. All right, now then. Joanne has asked for an appropriate to fifteen hundred dollars, uh, for the groundbreaking and the dedication of Hope Creek Pavilion. And she's already spent about nine hundred of it.
And nine hundred is gonna put in the.
Yeah, that's, they would have that many of them. In that type, well, not be that type, but just a flyer or something, yeah, bring it up.
I make a motion we appropriate fifteen hundred dollars for her, for the groundbreaking to get.
Second.
All for it. All right. Now then, is the killer. Y'all have a chance to review all of this insurance. Oh, yeah, some pretty bad. Y'all have a chance to review all of this insurance business?
Is this with the same company we were already with?
It's with the way, yeah. Now, why this sudden jump? Now, we got another bill today that was way higher than the one we had previously had. I tried to call to find out about it, and I didn't get to talk to anyone. But why they, why they told me the sudden increase was, that was that several tornadoes keeping around through the state, and cities like us had found out that they were way underinsured. So the municipal league has sent around appraisers to re-praise our buildings. And so that's why, after they re-praised them, uh, that's why the sudden increase and premium.
Hard to believe this building would have millions of them, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, but now the gym, uh, it's a million point six. So, uh, pretty good side building.
So that's what the building's in their current condition, that way if a storm comes through and we have to replace another roof, we're gonna file on that?
Yeah, yeah.
I hope it blows the gym away.
Yeah.
And it goes out, I mean, it needs to leave after that.
The whole building.
Collect that one point six and then up. We gonna have very many arguments in here.
Yeah, we're gonna move the city hall up to, to the shelter.
So what do we need to do here, Mr. Booker? Approve the money?
Well, we need to look at it, Rob. Uh, these options. We can reduce the coverage on the contents. We can remove certain buildings from the policy. I mean, there's a lot of things we can do to cut it down, but that could be y'all's calls.
Can we remove some of the coverage on some of the buildings, or they said that?
They said we could do it.
No, I mean, like, for what they say the buildings are worth. Can we lower that?
Just to arrest us, the last line on the gen- on the sheet here, the gym or the.
Appraised value of the building, what we could do is take a building off.
Yeah, and not even insure.
Not, just walk on high.
We still have so much risk if somebody goes on their property and gets hurt.
I know, I know, I know. Now, that, this is not liability.
This is just, uh, destruction insurance or a?
If the building burns or blows away.
Yes, for replacement cost or estimate.
That's what, that's what they estimate that would cost the replacement yet.
I don't mind if our station had more than fifty thousand coming in.
Maybe a little bit more than fifty thousand dollars worth.
Yeah, you definitely need to change them, Mary.
Uh, yeah. We, originally, before we went with the municipal, we had coverage on the buildings that you see there. Uh, the fire station, the city hall, that's all the buildings we had coverage on. We're not in a shop, the city shop, three buildings we had coverage on. And then when we went to the municipal, it was so much cheaper than what we had. Then we, uh, raised our coverage from two hundred fifty-nine thousand up to a million three hundred ninety-five thousand for the different, for two hundred dollars a year less than what we were paying for the insurance on three buildings. Now then, with this reappraisal, then there's where we are. But now, I don't know where they'll let us cut the values of a building or not, but I know they did say that we could just cut the whole building. Or the contents, uh, content value here, see, we got twenty-six seven thousand dollars in content value. So we could cut down on the content value.
But like, some of them you need to go up, 'cause the fire station needs to go up in content.
Well, wait a minute now, Shannon, why you think?
Fifty-one thousand?
Yeah, why, why you think they need to go up?
I don't know, you got to put.
The trucks, the trucks don't come into this.
Trucks, yeah, auto insurance.
They got their own insurance.
That'd just be the maintenance area unit, and our turnout gear, and the, and the.
The base, the base building, you might say.
We'd cut that down quite a bit down on that, in my opinion.
I, I think it could be.
But now, on cutting the value of the, of the appraised value of, of a building or anything like that, I don't know that we can do that, we can challenge that appraisal.
Yeah, that's why I say I don't know where they'll even know how to do that or not.
Oh, can't challenge it?
Wouldn't you challenge anything, yeah.
I, I think that would be the, the possible course if we're looking at trying to get a building devalue.
Devalue.
We can't do it on our own, the way I understand it, the way I've, I've heard it in the past on other things, is we can't, we can't lower the value of, of any building on our own, but we can challenge the appraisal.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And some, and, and there've been multiple cases I heard of, and it was about, uh, personal property. Uh, several years ago, there's a big push to get everybody reappraised and reassessed and all that, and there were several people that I know personally that challenged their appraisal.
Yeah.
And once they challenged it, they dropped it.
Okay, yeah. I mean, what we can do, what are y'all saying?
They got the truck wagon, uh, two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars.
That's a replacement cost.
Place the whole.
Truck wagon building, Shannon, you said?
No.
Two hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. If the price that we got quote on this pavilion, that's cheap.
Hey, Shannon, on Dee's shop up there, her own building, when I got insurance on it, the replacement cost was so? Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I told Dee, leave everything turned on, lady suck up. Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that building is nowhere, I mean, but to replace it, that's, that's crazy, I mean, and that's what these are, replacement costs.
Yeah, at today's cost.
At today's cost.
Can't more than interest, just top seven percent, I think I read on the Oracle today.
So, if someone goes on this property, if we drop the insurance on, say, the gym warehouse, and we've got it rented out, somebody gets hurt, or relatable.
No, uh.
They said this wasn't, didn't cover that anyway.
No, this won't cover that. Now, this is not liability. This is.
This is just replacement.
Building itself, yeah.
Right.
Building itself.
So what about if we rent out the gym and somebody gets hurt?
A lot of buildings, we, we exempt from that. You, you gotta work out sort of city.
So I guess what I'll say is if we cut that, that's, that's eight hundred fifty dollars. The only, the only thing, the only risk we'd be at is if it burnt down or blew away. Is it right through what? If we cut that, the only risk we would be at is if it burnt down or it blew away, basically, we're right.
But with it being not had electricity for so long, and stealing everything, and being kind of taking everything out of it, they're trying to hook electricity back up to it here in the near future, you might as well keep that insurance for a little bit.
Well, I mean, this is y'all's call. I mean, but now, I, I hate to even really mention the letter we got today, but, well, that's thirty-five thousand dollars.
Three thousand, they want, really.
Well, there was, there was another bill come in today that was a staggering number, that, and I tried to call the municipal, and the person I didn't get to talk to never returned my call. So, but I won't start on that again tomorrow and see what that is, but if, if that's the case, we may have to forget it all.
What was, what was the letter?
It was a, uh, invoice.
Fifteen thousand dollars?
I'm thinking sixteen thousand after we.
Sixteen thousand?
Fifteen or sixteen thousand, something like that, you already been paying them, I mean, you're paying a good bit on.
Cause we probably use those shit, but it's in it, that's, that you pay bill, huh?
With the bills on?
Yeah, I think so.
And that's an insurance invoice?
Yeah. I mean, something, some might write about it, but anyway, though, it's something.
It's probably hung up in the portal.
Something, I know that.
The water well buildings at twenty thousand six hundred, I'm not familiar with what building goes off.
That little white building, that right out there, one of them, and then the other down at the.
You, you wanna book that off, but then you think, I ain't.
If something happens.
Fifty-four dollars a year. So we had to rebuild that building, and when it comes through, a tree falls on it, we had to rebuild the building, we gonna spend thousand fifteen hundred dollars?
Is this for the year or for three months?
That's probably for three months, sir.
Oh, oh, that, that's two thousand nine hundred dollars. I see, yeah. I said we cut the water well.
Of course, that's still not two hundred dollars a year.
I got it three times.
Yeah.
Well, it says electric well control. Is that the controls or is that just the building?
No, the, the well control or shepherds aren't different.
Yeah, they're two different things, they're the same cost.
One well, one well two, uh, and then the, uh, the tank, uh. I don't see them, no, lit, well, they're not controlled, okay, yeah. Now, twenty thousand dollars, that would be a reasonable price for that.
Is that the controls or is it just the building?
It says elec- electronic well control.
We wanna keep that insurance.
Yeah.
Lightning.
Oh, yeah, lightning's a bad thing for that.
Thing of that nature.
That last big storm that had come through, that was about six or eight roller farm that got hit.
Keep in mind also that, uh, this is, uh, um, five thousand dollars.
So, on a, on a five thousand dollar deductible on a two thousand dollar building, can we pay both water well number one and water well number two?
I don't really know, Rob, if you can track that. Those are just those little. Where did I see that thirty-something thousand dollars for?
How you remember you saying fifteen thousand dollars per property?
Well, anyway, I wrong about the thirty, the whole year is, uh. Yeah.
Maybe three seventy?
Uh, the whole year is fifteen thousand four hundred and a half seven dollars.
Now, what is that for? It's not same, it's weird.
Well, that, that's what I was saying, this year don't guide with rat this year, and this came from the municipal, guided the bill bit. Uh, oh, you built it cheaper up here? Well, yeah, yeah, I just cut all of them to zero. Uh, well, anyway, though, that's what I say, I want to, uh, call the municipal and find out what might difference to this price and this price.
Just one of the years for three.
Y'all.
Which one, eight thousand?
No, no, cut that. Okay, and that's for the year, for the year. Yeah.
But why would you, why don't you have a five thousand dollar deductible on a water well building that can be displaced?
It says it's worth twenty thousand dollars.
Will they pay that?
Appraised value.
I wonder what the appraised value is.
Mine's five thousand.
Did probably fifteen. You wrote me one secret appraisal that came down here.
Yeah, I went with it.
You went with it to these places?
And we took some stuff, because it was factually had like, compensation fans and.
Something, but someday, something pretty weird.
No, no, that way, just, just do these buildings.
What?
He was like to go also ins- insure the compensation, like the fans around the.
Oh, oh, yeah, he measured the fence around the, the park down here.
So did they add that anyway, to, to the invoice?
That, that fence is not.
I know, but did they add that to the invoice anyway, and that might be the difference?
No, well, that's what I don't know. I don't know why this, and explosive bill here versus this, I don't know what, wh- where that come from.
We kinda need to just shake this around our heads till we find out about that bill.
Yeah, I know. And, and what I have already done, had mailed it yet, but I have already prepared a check for this first year, for three months payment. Give us time, keep our insurance in life, so.
Right.
Then when we, uh, get our dumps in a row, which we did do pretty quick, well, then we need to, uh, see what we can do to reduce it. In the meantime, I'm gonna try to get someone, find out what this, this fifteen thousand, it, it can give you double what this over here, yeah.
This is, this three-month premium might be a one-month premium.
Well, yeah. That fit in with that, do a whole lot of reviewing. So, uh, so anyway, though, uh, let's see, y'all are correcting my mind here. Y'all did approve and sign this.
Yes, it did.
I think I've written, or I made a motion, I think it was more written.
Oh, I got it written down here, but.
So that money must be gonna come up pretty quick?
Say, you what?
So that money, they're gonna have to find it pretty quick, that's gotta be done before December.
Well, yeah, yeah, it's worth a dollar. I mean, now, you talking about the water tank?
Yeah.
We shouldn't owe Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the latest amount of that extra money. Now, if, if that don't come through, we're, we got a good feeling that it will, but if it don't come through, then we need to rally around, round.
We'll sit around and talk about this more.
Yeah, we need to talk about.
You're like a bank, so we're gonna, and we're gonna use the.
Well, anyway, though, y'all got anything else? I want to, uh, the council, I wanna thank y'all for, for all the big pieces tonight. Left, walking, I mean, I think we've accomplished something, so, uh, anyway. Anyway, I'm waiting on her, I'm gonna back to her, I'll thank y'all real quick. Yeah, I reckon we ready if you're ready.
Yes, but, um, as far as, um, an Eva report, I really don't have anything else to update, because we have not had our meeting this month, we had to postpone it, so it's basically the same as we reported last, um, council meeting. We are still planning on trying to do a movie night in the park at some point. Um, we are also looking at our October event, um, just those kinds of things, but again, I don't have anything new other than what we talked about last time. Um, the only thing I do have new, Ms. Patty, last year, um, I wanna say it was like, I don't know, time gets away from you, September, October, Ms. Richardson, Margie Richardson, when she was on the council, she asked the council at that time to look at a drainage situation. across the back of Ms. Patty's property. Um, it was, because it poses a potential infestation of mosquitoes when those, that ditch overflows and it just stands there and that water becomes stagnant. Um, to my understanding, no one has contacted, you know, we, we were going to have the city look at it, but no one has contacted her to move forward with anything on that. So she was just wondering what the status of that.
Yes, it's still the same as it was, and we are going to go down there and look at it, uh, and try to, to make some help. Uh, but now, let it be clear to everybody that it's actually on the wall for us to do it. That's on private property.
Well, not if she's willing to pay, I mean, the, the city can help a citizen and she, she realizes that she would have to pay a general contractor.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we can't do anything alter right away legally. Believe me, I have Attorney General office coming down here and checking into this already.
Okay.
So, but I'm going to go and look at Patty's backyard. Now, uh, Bobby Harden come to me, he said, you could call him about day of the ditch over the hill. He just moved up where we could really get in there and get some grade, but it looked like it might be an eight or ten foot cut to go across that hill. And if that's true, then it would, time it gets float, it would be all his metal. So, we're going to have to do something different, but we are going to try to help. We go sticker nose up far enough to try to help what we already said we'd do. But I'm afraid, based on some complaints that has been by us, the Attorney General office, we're going to have to quit working on credit problem. So, I mean, it's a shame, but that's just the way some people here.
So you're saying that the city, the city can't, if, if a citizen has a project that they're needing help with, the city couldn't bid that project and the, the, the landowners reimburse the city, or even a little extra?
I, I think we could, with the property owner paying the bill. Now, that's the way we tore down all these houses. Now, we tore down these houses in charge by five hundred dollars. But ain't no way in the world that you could get anyone else to come in and tear one of our house down for five hundred dollars.
Correct.
So we're trying to help as far as the citizens will ever help. But citizens of, of this town is filing complaints, we're going to have to fight about it. It's a shame, but it's.
Well, I mean, I, I think, I think what the bottom line is, is as long, the city can make money, it's like you're the contractor. If, if she can choose to hire an outside contractor, but if you guys can come in and do it for her at a contracted rate, city makes money, that's a, that's a income source coming in. And it does help the citizen on top of that too, because she's not having to pay what a outside contractor would charge.
I understand what you're saying, Deanna, but no, we can't legally do that. We're not contractors.
So what you do for anybody else?
We're not, we're not, we're not contractors, but we are going to have to try to help Patty with her problem. Patty, is there dry weather crops that ditch behind your house, cover it in it?
Yeah.
They are?
One side.
One side.
The other side stopped up.
If the other side was cleaned out, would it help matters?
Oh, definitely.
I, I've been trying.
It's not as, the same size as the other side is.
Do you need to cover it?
On that other side, I do.
Wait a minute.
It goes into Jay's land.
They, they, there's one cover right next to Bobby's fence, is that right?
Right, right.
Now, is there another cover going down?
Yes, but I don't think it's the same size, I think it's bent and closed up. I don't think it's the same size as Bobby's.
Do you need that cover across there?
Yes, if it's the blow rod, it would, yes.
Alright. You know how big that bow did down the line?
No, I don't.
Would you think it stopped up?
Yes, definitely.
Really? I think y'all all, all agree with it, it recently stopped raining, so we could go down there now and, and try to look at it and see if we can help.
Yeah.
But, uh.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that size is that's going into Jay's land there, but it runs off into Jay's pasture.
That load, that load drainage behind your house, where does it actually go to?
It, Jay's pasture.
Does it just flood?
Goes, yeah.
Spread out in the, in the pasture?
It goes on top of his land, uh.
It's not ditched, though.
No, it's not, it don't end up in a ditch on top, it's on top of his land.
Well, I had thought also about building a little levee on the side next to your house, but we do that, we just make it on in your backyard.
Yeah, it already is that, when it rains.
So how can we, I'm talking about something I hadn't seen. How can we keep it from pounding in your backyard?
If that was open.
You think it would rain?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Do you know the history of that house?
No.
Well, I was told something today that I'm having a hard time believing. That house was moved in there, and I don't think it was.
Uh, I think Edward Cooper bought it.
Built it.
I thought it was good.
I didn't.
I think so.
I always thought that it was good, built that out.
His mama lived right next, back this side of it, that house, and I, I think it was built there.
Yeah, I think it was.
If it wasn't, why was it built so low?
That I don't know, that I don't.
If it was moved in, it might have to have something with a floor in it.
Yes, the foundation is lower than the yard.
Right, I know it.
Yeah.
I know it. Well, anyway, the vast size, but we will look at it and see what we can do.
Okay, okay.
So, uh, but before we're going across Bobby's hill, we haven't shot no grade, but just looking at it, it looked like it's a pretty deep cut.
Yeah.
So, uh, so anyway, though, you got any SD, Anna?
No, that, that finished me.
Alright. Well, y'all let me know something Monday, or later Monday, because the clock's ticking, we either got to have a talisman, he got to bid, or he don't want to bid. So if he don't have a bid, we go back to redid, forget it, send the money back. I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's, we should have took it the first time, when they got it reduced after eighty-five thousand, but we didn't.
I'm sure he will, I'm sure, if he was willing to take eighty-five thousand the first time.
I, I feel like he would, there was some, some talk at one time that he wasn't going to redid it, but he did. And so I guess you did, because it's him and one more, and the other wasn't, wasn't acceptable. So anybody in the council, anything else, anybody else? You got something you did, that come your town?
They've got some trouble with her, yeah.
I, I make a motion with the journal.
I say it then, well.